This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The chair is on City Clerk, calls on City Clerk Ivan Nelson for the roll call.
Councilman Harris?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
Avery?
Here.
President Eccles is absent today and our meeting is being chaired by our President Pro Tem, Councilman Johnny Cannon. Stewart?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
And Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilman Harris to lead the invocation. Please stand or remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
That is great. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come together. We thank you for all the blessings that you have bestowed upon us as we have come through the season to celebrate the birth of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ. As we meet here today, please be with us and lead us and guide us and let us make those decisions that are pleasing to you. Bless all of the city and all of the residents of the city-state. God, please remember our troops in harm's way. Bring them back home to us safely and we will always continue to give you all the praise and all the glory. These blessings we ask in Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Community Development Finance Committee Work Session and City Council Meeting held on December 17th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known as saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payments and accounts for the weeks of December 13th through the 19th and the 20th through the 26th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known as saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamation, as Mayor. We have someone today, Christopher Clements. Could I get you to come up, please, sir? He's an Eagle Scout, Gadsden City High School. He's a cross-country runner and he's been working with us up at the Falls to have laid, he's laid out a course. They've had some cross-country events up there and it's going to be something that's probably going to get better and better as Parks and Rec takes care of it. He's applied for four different colleges, don't know where he's going yet, Harvard, Colorado, like Alabama, and Oregon.
Oregon.
Oregon, that's right, Oregon. They got some cross-country out there, I bet. But anyway, I'm gonna let him tell you a little bit about what he's done and we're real proud of him. It's just another example, like many we've had in here from Gadsden City schools who are on the ball and headed for a good education and it's public service as well.
I'll let you talk about the course a little bit. Yes, sir.
As Mayor Guyton was saying, I am a student at Gadsden City High School. I'm 17 and I'm currently Life Scout with the Boy Scouts of America and working at my Eagle. Eagle, the Eagle Scout rank is the highest rank for a Boy Scout and must be attained by the individual's 18th birthday day. And with earning the rank, one must complete a major project, an Eagle Scout project, and I create a cross-country course for the city of Gadsden. I've, I run cross-country for Gadsden City and while I was running, I realized that Ed Owe County doesn't have very many cross-country courses and decided to try and make one for the city of Gadsden and the county. So I, I was, but ran Falls and saw this location and realized it could be a great course because I've run, I've run races in North Carolina, across the state and across the country and it looked like it could provide one of the best ones that I've seen. I met with Coach Esslinger of Scottsboro. He's a Alabama State Hall of Fame member and 40-time, he's coached 40 cross-country championships at Scottsboro High School. And he said it's probably one of the best courses he has seen and is, has the possibility of becoming a state championship course, sectional championship course, and possibly even beyond. I'd like to present the mayor and the city of Gadsden with $400 for continued maintenance of the course and mile markers.
We were talking upstairs about giving us some money. We never had anybody come give us some money. Stick this one, I know I'm the TV. Anyway, thank you a lot. We appreciate you and good luck to you and thank you for all your help.
Mayor, we want to congratulate him on his, this will let you obtain your Eagle. Great, congratulations then.
The next one's unfinished business. We have none today. Number nine's resolution authorizing agreement with Bass Anglers Invitational Trails Incorporated. This is for the city to sponsor a fishing tournament to be held October 4th and the 5th of 2014 and the amount is $15,000. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? There be no further discussion. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known as saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
The next one's a resolution authorizing agreement with S and M E. This is for environmental services related to the MS4 Stormwater Compliance from October 2013 through September 2014. The amount budgeted is $86,500 and the city is responsible for 39 percent, which is The other entities within the city area will also be responsible for the remainder of the cost. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Self-explanatory.
All right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known as saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
That brings us to new business. We have any new business today?
Yes, Mr. President, I have a few items here that I'd like to bring up under new business today. The first of, the first item is a resolution authorizing agreement with River Trace Venture LLC regarding an escrow deposit account. I'd like to ask that we consider this today.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be known as saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, this is, this is in relation to the, the commercial development activity at, at the old River Trace Golf Course site next to the Goodyear Plant. And this particular item is related to Gander Mountain and, and them and their lender actually funding an escrow account for construction activity. So just something that's typical with these kinds of projects.
Any more discussion? There be no further discussion. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known as saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Do we have any other business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have another item. It's a resolution authorizing agreement between the city of Gadsden and S and M E for jurisdictional water assessment and preliminary protected species assessment on the Couso Riverfront Park. Again, I'd like to ask that we consider this today.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be known as saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move for passage.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, again, this is related to the development activity that's going to take place at the, the riverfront, for the riverfront park behind Hobby Lobby or the existing Hobby Lobby location along the waterfront. And I think this is a required study. It has to be done in an effort to do an assessment to determine if there are any endangered species or wildlife or anything along those lines that are going to be impacted by the, by the development.
Any more discussion?
It's also a payback to all the engineering, I mean, I'm sorry. No, no discussion.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known as saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Any more new business?
Yes, Mr. President, the final item that I have here is a resolution authorizing application for grant from the Ed Owe County Community Development Committee to improve the drainage of the North Gadsden Park. Again, I'd like to ask that we consider this today.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be known as saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move for passage.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, this again is, we're petitioning the, the Ed Owe County Community Development Committee for funding to, to help address an ongoing drainage issue that we have at the North Gadsden Park. So if you've, if you've been out there recently, especially after some of the extended periods of rain, you've seen where we, we have a new lake when it rains out there. So that's not the full intent of that park, so we want to address the, the drainage issues and we want to use this grant, these grant monies to, to help address that issue.
Any more discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known as saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Any more new business?
Mr. President, I have a resolution I'd like to ask for unanimous consent to consider this morning. It's a resolution amending 2014 budget to allow for additional $6,000 distribution to the Gadsden Commercial Development Authority for the cost of building a new website.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today as an item of new business, let it be known as saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the vote is unanimous for consent.
Now, last for passage. Second.
Any discussion?
This website's already up and running and it's going to be another real good tool for recruiting commercial development, so, but it did run them a little tight on their budget, so that's the reason we're, we're adding $6,000 to them.
But this is also coming out of some other grant funds. It's not the general fund, right?
I don't know where the money's coming from. It's the general fund.
But it's some grant monies though, out of that though, right? Coming out of two different?
Two different accounts.
That's not, that's not, that's.
That's the other website, okay. That's the difference. Oh, I'm looking at the wrong one here.
This one's come out of account number ends in 90 and the other one ends in 99.
Yeah. Okay, I knew it was two of them. Okay, all right.
We'll address that one for next week. Anyway, it's going to relieve their tight budget and certainly appreciate that.
Further discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known as saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Any more new business? That brings us down to department reports, community boards, et cetera. Do we have any today? Mike Hilton, Assistant Public Works Director, needs to come and speak with us.
Good morning. As Councilman Cannon said, I'm Mike Hilton with the Public Works Department. Just want to give you a brief update, if we can, about the expansion of our recycling program here in the city of Gadsden. We currently have a, a small recycling area across from City Hall, many of you folks are probably familiar with. We have recently purchased a, a different location, a different building, the old C.D. Short Building, 306 Henry Street. We're in the process of renovating that area. We will be moving next week, January 6th, we'll be moving recycling from here at City Hall over to that area. We're going to do a little more than what we're doing now, actually a lot more than what we're doing now. With the expansion moving to that location, we will be able to bring in a lot more than what we're doing here. We'd still be recycling paper, plastics, glass, but also clothing, electronics, batteries, cardboard, and we'll do it on a bigger volume. We will have a contractor that will purchase these items from us. What we will be doing there at that location, we'll be working our, our general hours, 7 to 3, that's our normal Monday through Friday, public works hours. But there will be drop-off there like there is here, 24 hours, seven days a week. We will have employees on-site, Monday through Friday there, that will maintain the place, keep it clean, take the materials that have been dropped off and move them inside the building for bailing or compaction in order to be hauled off later. We look for it to be a, a boom for us. We're currently getting a little bit of money with the recycling that we're doing here. We're hoping to, hopefully, move that into a larger amount coming in. Also, there's lots of grants and, and things like that's available when we get into that location and get those things moving that we can apply for. That'll help us with the funding of operating that facility. If you're wondering where it's at, it's, it's right across the street from Modern Heating and Cooling, across the highway from the Honda dealership there, the old C.D. Short Building. If you go by there now, we're in the process of painting and doing some, some renovating there. I think it'll be great for us, if you have any questions.
No, no question, just a comment, Mike. You say they're going to be someone there to make sure it stays pretty much up, cleaned up and?
Yes, sir. We, we will have employees there, Monday through Friday, 7 to 3. And it's, like you can tell, across the street, there's a lot of folks that are involved in recycling here in the city of Gadsden. And when they come and drop things off in the evening, of course, there will be security there, we'll have video surveillance there, it will be well-lit when we come in the mornings if there's any debris that's been scattered around, of course, we'll police that and keep it up. We want it to look nice. If there's ever a problem with, with how it looks, there'll be a phone number there that will go to our office at Public Works. If there's ever a problem, we would hope that folks would let us know immediately.
Don't worry about it, they'll let you know and I definitely will let you know.
Sure.
They'll let me know and I'll let you know.
Sure, please let, I think you have me on speed dial.
I do.
Yeah, that's not a problem.
You're number one.
We want to, I don't want to be one, maybe five or six, not one. But yeah, we want to, to make this thing a real positive thing for the city. Got some other things coming up in the future to try to help promote this. We'll, we'll maybe come back with you guys on some of that stuff later, but we're hoping to do this next week, January 6th. We've got a banner up across the street letting everybody know. Christmas is crazy over here, Christmas holidays. These trailers that we normally take two or three times a week, we've gone maybe eight or nine times already. Folks just bringing their cardboard and that kind of stuff in. And that's good. Everything that goes into recycling is not going in our landfill. We're going to be green in more ways than one. From what we're hearing, we do, we did have to apply for a permit with ADM. Of course, ADM has their hands in a lot of things now, including recycling because of water runoff and things run through there on that. From what we're being told, we believe that we will be the first actually permitted facility in the state of Alabama. There's a lot of recycling going on, but we're actually following the, the right path to do this thing right to start with. And so hopefully that'll help us maybe shine a little brighter in the future.
Mike, do you feel comfortable at this point talking about any projections as far as the rebate activity because that's going to be a significant?
It can be. I, I don't want to throw out numbers right now. We're getting, you know, a couple thousand dollars a month with what we do over here, which doesn't pay for the help. What we can do over there, the volume we can do over there, we will be hauling this stuff off in tractor trailer loads as we compact the cardboard and the plastic, which are your, your main dollar issues right now. As we get a tractor trailer load of that stuff coming in, it'll go off and, and we'll get the funds from there. Don't have numbers for you now at this time. I, I think to venture out there. What we will do though, as we see this expand, we may open that up to, because it is a money-making issue, to commercial, you know, all the cardboard that we can get or all the plastic we can get, not just residential, which is what we want now, but maybe open that up to commercial too, to try to take the load off some of those guys too.
Well, you usually don't, Mike, we usually don't take questions from the audience, but I see Pastor Simmons back there raised his hand, he wanted to ask you a question, so.
Sure.
I was just wondering about, thank you, so my doubt is wondering about the projection of jobs, that, that possible jobs that would be considered.
Good question. Yes, sir, and, and right now, we, we want to have three employees there, a full-time employee and two part-time employees. And what we've had to do, because we don't know where this is going, we're just kind of moving some folks around within our system right now. If this thing takes off, if you were in Gunnersville or maybe Oxford or Anniston where they have a little bit of a system going on now, they probably have 10 or 15 folks working there. And so as it builds, of course, we'll, through the administration, build with that. We want to make sure that we can, we can do the work that is coming to us. This is, it will be a priority for us.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks for the question.
Yes.
Yes, anything else?
And I don't want to say this, this is more of a comment than anything else, but I appreciate Mike's level of passion for, for this. I mean, you know, being green is not necessarily something that yields an immediate return for a city. It's more about a philosophy and wanting to be environmentally responsible. So, you know, Mike has a real passion for this and you need somebody like that within an organization to make it work. So I, I definitely appreciate that. And I also want to thank this administration for being a trendsetter once again with a green initiative, because if you remember, we were one of the first cities, if not the first, to drive the cooking oil recycling initiative. So, so again, I'm proud of my city as it relates to those green initiatives and to the, to the question that was asked, you know, starting small can result in some level of economic impact, some real economic impact at some point. So, so I, I'm definitely excited about it.
Do you think this might grow into curbside recycling? That's would be the ultimate goal for all of us?
Any other questions? You know, we'll take it as it comes. That curbside is a whole different animal machinery-wise, separation-wise. I, I know the, the citizens may, may think that to be a better thing for us right now, just taking baby steps going into this. We need to, we need to get this under control first and then we'll come there. But, I mean, we'll just look at it as it comes and see what it morphs into.
We could probably use those, if we ever get to curbside, we could probably use those trailers we have now.
We have, we, we never had a, a shortage of use for the equipment that we have. So the existing trailers that we have across the street, we can, we can, if we're not picking up litter, which is what we use those trailers for on, on other times, we can haul lawnmowers, any other machinery that we do. I mean, we've got lots of use for the equipment that we have, not a problem.
Mayor? Mike, you might want to, and you may have it on, I haven't looked lately, but Channel 99, you might want to list what you're going to take and especially the numbers on the plastic, you know, get a, get with Brian, he can.
Yes, sir, I think he's, he's working on something right now that we're going to start next week. There will be a, there'll be a sign out front that lists what we have and the employees there will be more than happy to help. If you come up and you want to unload your car, they'll be happy to help you assist in doing that. They're not just going to watch you do whatever. We're going to, we're going to work on those guys to be really hands-on to get this thing going like it's supposed to be. If you bring something over there and it's not what's supposed to be there, of course, we would want to help you dispose of that properly too at that time. So we're kind of going to walk into this thing slowly but efficiently, if possible.
The employees you have, Mike, and this is probably a question I shouldn't ask you, but do they have any kind of training with like the batteries and stuff in case acid gets on or anything like that, bring the batteries in or?
No, sir. Just to be honest with you, this is just our, our general labor folks that are going over there and that'll be something we have to kind of safety-wise work into as we get there. We don't foresee a lot of car batteries, that kind of thing. Those things get recycled through a lot of the mechanical issues around here, but we very seldom see anything like that. So if those things come in, we'll, we'll have to address those as they come.
Mike, are you going to make a listing of things that you won't take or do not take, such as tires and so on and so forth? Let people know what not to bring down there?
At this time, presently, what's going to be on our sign is what we do take. That would, if it's not, if it's not on our list of taking, don't bring it. Of course, we don't recycle tires there, sure, sure, absolutely. It's not a household garbage disposal area. It's, it's not for tires and it's not for, for furniture, that kind of thing. It's for strictly recyclable materials. And so hopefully, and we'll work with the, with the public as it goes and educate as we go. Just wanted to say, in addition to the three employees that we have coming over there, a lot of you guys know Jason Hill. Jason is our environmental enforcement officer. I like to call him our TSI, he's our trash scene investigator. Hopefully, we will, Jason does a great job. I called him yesterday, we had an issue where a fellow was doing some illegal dumping over in East Gadsden and, and he was right on it, had it cleaned up, cleared up, citation written, two hours later. Jason does a great job. We will be hopefully moving him over to that facility also to help us kind of keep an eye on what's coming in and what's going out as far as legal versus illegal. Jason is happy to help us out with that, he'll kind of add a little bit to what he's doing, but he can handle it a little, we'll be fine.
Well, you know, one, one other point, many of us have seen the movie Aaron Brokovich and we talk, often we take a very critical position as relates to industrial locations and what they emit into our landfills and, and into the soil in general. You know, and rightfully so. We should be critical of that because that's, that's, that's a high-risk issue for us. But I think it's important to note that as private citizens, we have a responsibility to keep things like our, our batteries and, and other things that, that we're throwing in our trash can that ultimately end up in the landfill. There is a long-term negative effect associated with throwing those things in trash and dumping them in the landfill. So, you know, we have a responsibility to make sure that we're recycling that stuff and keeping it out of the landfill. I know we, we get in this discussion and we talk a lot about recycling, we talk a lot about rebate, but we forget, you know, those things that are actually making it to the landfill and can serve to be detrimental to us, so.
Got one more question for you, Mike.
Yes, sir.
Now, in terms of the facilities, how serves the city of Gadsden or the county at large? The one I'm getting at is, in order to understand where you're looking at in future expansion, it's pretty much determined by the net weight of what gets recycled?
Yes, sir. The way, the way I understand how this is, is going to work for us, the volume comes in, when the volume reaches a certain level, we'll call the contractor, he'll bring an 18-wheeler and we'll put it on his truck and he'll take it off.
All right, so now will it be a situation where people have to provide group of residency in the area or?
At this time, because we're getting paid for what we're shipping out, we're going to say no. Of course, this is a city of Gadsden facility and we're hoping that all the residents here, of course, would use that facility, but as of right now, we're not set up to make sure that you're not an Ed Owe County resident or someone else coming in, because we're getting, we're getting paid for that stuff. So the more you give me, the more I get. So, yeah, I'm personally okay with that. They come in with a Georgia tag, we're probably going to ask a couple of questions, but I, I can't see somebody, you know, coming from Rome to, all the way here, you know, to, to bring me some plastic. But if they do and they're, we're getting paid for it, we're not going to turn them away.
That's a great, that's a great question though, because obviously, you know, with, with copper material being something that people are, are stealing at a high level now, you know, you're going to have the need at some point for video surveillance and?
Yes, sir, we do have video surveillance coming. Maybe, I mean, make sure I'm clear, we're not paying anybody for any recycling material they're bringing us. If you want to bring us copper, thanks. But you're not getting a check when you leave. That's, that's not what we're going to do. We'll, we'll say thanks and we'll be glad to go get a check for it, yeah. While I've got you guys, let you know real quick, we've had a lot of questions on the leaf program that we've got going on this year. Starting next week, what we've done up to now is, is pick up all the piles. You spend a little time raking your yard, you put a pile out there. We've made several rounds where we've picked that up, let everybody know that starting next week also, we'll be working gutters and ditches along with the piles. We try to, have to hold off till the end of the season in order to do that because we'll never get the piles up if we didn't. It makes it slower, we'll be spread out in all the areas at one time instead of all of them going as a group through one. But if you'll let everybody know that if it's out there, we'll try to get that up here in the next month or so. All right, any other questions?
Rain beat you to it, but go ahead.
It helped, it helped. Thanks for your time.
All right. Do we have any more department reports? Don't have any more. Remarks by the Mayor and Council. Mayor Guyton, would you like to go first?
I hope everybody had a safe holiday, a good time, and be careful for New Year's Eve and New Year's Day. You know, there's a lot of celebrating going on then too, a lot of football games. You know, been some conversation lately about the traffic on Meagan Boulevard with the new development. You know, we, we want developments and we try to get them, but first of all, we, we don't try to keep private citizens from selling their property for new developments. But one problem we do have is 759. And I'm not sure exactly of all the details, but at one time there was $8 million in that pot for environmental and some right-of-way acquisition. And, you know, we had the people in Washington through the Federal Highway Department and went to Atlanta. We had a meeting here with ALDOT, the Historical Society signed off it wasn't going to be, it was the least impact on any of the neighborhoods, just a straight shot through the old Bowman Transportation behind the old Cory School and you would connect up with 278 and 431. And anyway, it seemed like it was a really good deal. The Federal Highway person in Atlanta was talking really favorable about it and I don't know if he got sick, had a problem, retired or what. So then we get a new person in over there and I don't know the names, I'm not even going to call them if I did. But anyway, and suddenly he didn't really like the plan. He thought that it might be a good idea to build a bridge off the bridge and do a tunnel under Gadsden State and go out towards Glencoe and then come through the Quality of Life property and connect back up with 278. And that's how ridiculous that really is, but that's the facts. So what we need is, we need people to, the legislature's So what we need is, we need people to, the legislature's going in session, talk to our delegation, send some letters, you know, we're gonna be sending some information to ALDOT, the governor, we, you know, we got people down there, and I think the first place we're gonna have to have the push is gonna be from the state, and then maybe we can get more out of the federal government. But that is a really, really, really needed project. You know, we want to develop things, it would take all the trucks off Meagan Boulevard. It wouldn't be an impact, a negative impact to neighborhood, the people have been wanting to go ahead and find out something for quite a while, they didn't know where to fix their house up or put a roof on or whatever, it's been in limbo. So, you know, if you, if you're someone who likes to call your delegation and not try to put the delegation in spot, we gotta give some push in Montgomery first, and that's what we need to do. We need to start pushing for that project to get back on the books and, and let's get it going. Even if it took four or five years, once we get it started, then we'd be able to continually get money till we got it done, and we need it really bad here to try to help our commercial development and a lot of issues like that. Thanks.
It's okay to put them on the spot, Mayor. That's fine.
Councilman Harris?
Thank you, Mr. Cannon. Thank you, Mayor. You know, I'll just also, you all know that that's been a real, real big issue with us for quite some time, the extension of 759. And, you know, there, you know, we've had the naysayers, you know, and, and people from Montgomery and people from everywhere else say that that will never, that project will never come to fruition. Well, you know, it, it may not ever come to fruition, but that doesn't mean that we don't have the responsibility to try to make sure that that project is, i- i- is, is a viable project for us here in Gadsden. We must continue, and the citizens, those persons who get, who get gridlocked, you know, and traffic, you know, over Meagan and, and it's important for you all to help us try to impress upon our legislators and the mayor, I mean, and I'm sorry, and the governor, the importance of us having 759 for more than one reason, economic development, safety. I hear oftentimes, you know, where the police or a fire, fire truck or emergency vehicle need to get to East Gadsden or something, and they can't get across Meagan Boulevard because of the gridlock that we have, and sometimes that traffic is backed up three or four blocks onto West Meagan Boulevard trying to cross Meagan, Meagan Bridge. I would just, I'd just like to solicit everybody's help in encouraging them to be, be vocal about the fact that we need to have 759 here in our city. We need to do that. Again, as we left you, you know, we said last, before Christmas, we said, everybody have a wonderful Christmas and be back to join us, you know, here as we almost entered into the new year. So it's good to see that you all have made it back, and it's good to see you here again today. The city of Gadsden takes pride in recognizing young men who are doing well and, and who are aspiring to do things, good things, and in particular, we're talking about the Eagle Scouts, those persons aspiring to be Eagle Scouts. And I, I know that this city takes pride in thanking you for your accomplishments. Now, as I say that, I see Kevin Ferguson in the audience here today, and Kevin's son. Kevin, tell us, would you please stand and tell us about your son, because he was one of those persons that we recognized several years ago in the Eagle Scout program?
My son is Kevin Ferguson's second. He's been at Park Beach, he's in Park, over in the wildlife, Martin, Park, and he's coming out of college, which we're proud to congratulate him out of our pay now. He currently works at BP Indicator as an electrician here.
What's the name of that school again?
Alabama State. Auburn University.
I don't want to take up much, but you might want to check ninety-nine out, he's been on there, we interviewed him, you know, he got in career tech just to, for a little bit of knowledge about electricity, and he really was a good student, good grades, they talked him into going into electrical engineering, and he graduated from A&amp;M, he went to work for BP Indicator, isn't I right, Kevin?
Right.
He's, you know, it shows you what you can do if you just bear down for a while, and the parents, your parents, you need to help push to get him educated. I'll shut up.
And that's, that's why we want to say thank you, you know, for your accomplishments, and we wish you all the success, you know, in all your future endeavors. And Mayor, I guess I'll ask, the Weaver Tech building, how close are we to moving court to that building and, and police chief having our precinct open over there?
We'll definitely be in that in 2014. It's coming along, the rain, we're working on the parking lot, the rain is, you know, it turned into a lake there for a while, the mud hole, but we're, we're pushing it really hard, we'll, we'll get there pretty soon.
That's gonna be a, that's gonna be a big, big item for the residents in East Gadsden when you have the shift change and your court over there, and every policeman that is coming in, patrol, patrol I should say, that's coming in for shift changes, you know, will be there at Weaver Tech and East Gadsden, so it's gonna impact our neighborhood in a very positive way.
We have three cars on that side too.
And, oh yeah, and we'll increase the, the patrol units in, in East Gadsden to three cars, so that's gonna be a very positive thing for us in East Gadsden. Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Chief, thank you, city.
That's all. Councilman Williams?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just, just a couple of quick comments about the, you know, and I, and I'll refrain from just referring to it as 759, but I, and you know, I think we, we all understand, that's the big project, and that's a, that's a, that's a huge opportunity for us to approach that project, and as the mayor said earlier, it's important that we reach out to our local legislative delegation, because for those of us that don't understand, that's kind, that's where the, this is in essence, a hundred million dollar project, and that's where the funding bottleneck is right now, is at the state level. And, and so we, we really have an opportunity to reach out to them and impress upon them what our traffic looks like typically on Fridays and weekends more so, but, but most days after 3:00 p.m., you know, it's, it's a bottleneck. And this gentleman sitting in front of me has been working a lot more diligently than people realize, and probably more than he'll ever say, not only pressing forward with alternatives as it relates to the 759 project, but he's also looking at, and the mayor alluded to some of this earlier, but he's also looking at alternate routes and alternate methods for relieving that traffic. At the end of the day, what we need is traffic relief over there. Now whether it's 759 or some other method, I don't really care, to be quite honest. We need traffic relief on Meagan Boulevard in East Gadsden, it's just that simple. We're not gonna stop economic development and commercial development simply because we have a traffic gridlock, gridlock, and I don't think anybody's asking for that. But, but again, we have a great opportunity to solicit some help outside of this city to make that happen for us. You know, again, at the risk of beating a dead horse with a stick, you know, Chad shared with his council a, a study, a traffic flow study that was done back in 2003, I believe it was, that, that showed, and that's what, ten years ago? And that ten-year-old, that, that, that ten-year-old traffic study showed us back then that we were over capacity in terms of the traffic activity. And there was, there's a lot of stuff that's over there now on Meagan Boulevard that wasn't there back in 2003. So that, that situation has not gotten better, it's only gotten worse. So again, please understand, folks, that this council is working diligently, the mayor is working diligently, and, and not the least of which, this, the, the city engineering department is working diligently to try to drive this, and, and it's a priority for us, but, you know, we're handcuffed to some degree, and, and we need your help as it relates to that. Thank you.
Councilman Avery?
Yes, I've got a quick, quick announcement. I'm gonna be leaving, as soon as I get through my announcement, I have a funeral to go to. Charlotte Stevens Smith passed away over the weekend, her funeral is today at 12:00. A lot of people know Charlotte, she worked at DHR, served on quite a few boards around the city, and so we're gonna be leaving, going to her funeral. I just wanted to make that announcement. I know several people I said something to this morning didn't even realize she had passed away, but she passed away this past Saturday. I also want to wish everybody a safe and Happy New Year, so police ma'am and police sir, be safe. Chief, are we providing any towing or rides for people who get just a little bit over? We're not?
Thanks for free ride to jail, Chief. Don't pass go.
We've done that in the past, I mean, give them a break. If somebody calls and say they're a little bit over, can't we just go pick them up, take them home, or get the car towed for them or something? I mean, come on, this is, have a heart, this city. Thank you.
I think AAA is doing that, Robert.
Okay.
And Easterwood Racker Service will drag your car in for you.
Councilman Stewart?
Racker Services, Racker Service. We, we did provide some transportation if somebody got a little bit past precious and needed some help, probably ought to consider that next year anyway. Other than that, just have a safe and Happy New Year.
Councilman Reed?
Is everybody almost through now? My answer to the, all this thing over here in East Gadsden is start developing on this South River, 'cause we don't have all that traffic problem over here.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure I'm with you there, Ben.
Well, if you got too much over there, develop over here and you'll lose some of it over here. That's all, that's all. Again, Christopher, congratulations, son, I'm serious about that. The Eagle Scout is as high as you can go. I'm gonna tell you, anywhere you go in the United States, especially in the military, you go in the military at a higher rank just because you were an Eagle Scout. Congratulations on the team effort up there. Happy New Year to everybody, and the driving force, I know good and well, Mike Clements had something to do with this, didn't he? Absolutely. But we're proud of you. Man lives in District Seven, by the way. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Is that why we, by us just making Cub Scout, that's why we didn't do it in Gadsden?
I made first class, and you see how far I went. Think about where this man could go with Eagle Scout. My goodness gracious, it's unbelievable to me, but congratulations, really, I mean that.
Be in no further business or no further comments? Do I have a motion to adjourn? We adjourned.